Okay, Sarge, just please start your recordings. Sarge, just please start your recordings.
You see recording done.
Cloud done.
Okay, Sergeant Lugo, you may begin with your open statement, please.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. At this time, would all panelists please turn on your video? To minimize disruption, please place electronic devices to vibrate or silent. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair Miller, we are ready to begin.
Thank you so much, Sergeant Lugo. It is great to see everyone here this morning. Forgive the technical mistake that has everyone now in the hearing remotely as opposed to in person. So I thank everyone for joining. Good morning and welcome to today's legislative hearing. I am Councilmember Adenick Miller. I am the Chair of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. Today, we will be hearing two pieces of legislation, intro 2452, of which I am the chief sponsor, and intro 2325 at the request of the mayor. Beginning with 2320, 2454, this bill would amend the New York City's collective bargaining law to allow non-members to proceed through the grievance and arbitration process without union representation, so long as non-member assumes the cost. The bill would account for the Supreme Court decisions and Janus versus Askme, which declared that unions could no longer collect mandatory share fees. So to cover the costs of collective bargaining, in the aftermath of the court's decision, union leadership feared that more public workers would withdraw from the unions, magnify free riders, where employees can reap the benefits of union bargaining without supporting them financially. The aim of 2450, 2454 is to help ameliorate the free rider effect by removing specific services and benefits that the public sector unions are required to provide to non-union members. This will reduce the unions' obligations and financial strain, ultimately preserving the viability of of unions' valuable public sector services. Turning to intro 2325, this bill will provide job protection for restaurant, food service workers, airport workers displaced during COVID-19 pandemic. Also known as the right to recall, as food service airport employees reopen post-pandemic, and employees would be required to first offer a previously laid-off worker their job back before hiring another applicant. Often, economic downturns force employees to cut costs, causing older and more experienced workers to be terminated and replaced with younger, cheaper labor. It's imperative to protect workers across these essential industries so that they are not undermined and exploited. The pandemic has only reinforced the importance of job, income, and security for the cities and central workers. I look forward to hearing the feedback from the administration, the city's unions, and concerned advocates about today's legislation. I'd like to thank my staff for putting this together, Special Advisor, great Joe Goldblum, Oliver Sulejad, Legislative Director John Wani, and of course, council staff, Council Bianca Vitale, Elizabeth Arts, and Nevin Singh. And also like to thank the members that have joined us this morning. Councilmembers Adams, Moya, Rosenthal, Drum, Dennewitz, Lewis, and I guess we have them all. So I thank you, and with that, we can begin our hearing. Today's testimony from the administration. If Bianca, if you can swear them in, it would be swell.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. My name is Bianca Vitale, and I am Counsel to the Committee on Civil Service and Labor for the New York City Council. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are called on to testify when you will be unmuted by the host. I will be calling on panelists to testify. Please listen for your name to be called. I will be periodically announcing who the next panelist will be. For everyone testifying today, please note that there may be a few seconds of delay before you are unmuted, and we thank you in advance for your patience. All hearing participants should submit written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. At today's hearing, the first panelist to give testimony will be representatives from the administration, followed by council member questions, and then members of the public will testify. Councilmembers who have questions for a particular panelist should use the raise hand function in Zoom, and I will call on you after the panelist has completed their testimony. I will now call on members of the administration to testify. Testimony will be provided by Benjamin Holt, Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Consumer and Worker Protections, Office of Labor Policy Standards. Stephen Starr, Deputy Director and General Counsel of the New York City Office of Collective Bargaining. Additionally, the following members of the admin will also be available for answering questions after testimony is provided. Stephen Atanian, Executive Director for External Affairs at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. Before I begin, before we begin, I will administer the oath. I will call on each of you individually for a response. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Deputy Commissioner Holt?
I do.
Deputy Director Stephen Starr?
I do.
Executive Director Tony?
I do.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner Holt, you may begin when ready.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Miller, and members of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. My name is Benjamin Holt, Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Consumer and Worker Protections, Office of Labor Policy and Standards. I am joined today by my colleague Stephen Atanian, DCWP's Executive Director for External Affairs. DCWP protects consumers and workers through enforcement of key consumer protection and workplace laws. These include New York City's paid safe and sick leave law, Fair Work Week laws, protections for freelance workers under the Freelances and Free Act, and recently passed legislation for third-party food delivery workers. Our agency advocates for new policies, investigates complaints, conducts proactive investigations, and recovers restitution for workers. As Mayor de Blasio said earlier this summer, a recovery for all of us means New York City moves closer and closer to fully reopening our economy, restoring the jobs we lost and ensuring equality in our comeback. DCWP promotes the city's recovery by facilitating the reopening of businesses and addressing the severe economic impact the pandemic had and continues to have upon hundreds of thousands of working New Yorkers. As the economic impact of the pandemic came into focus and as businesses began reopening last summer, DCWP advocated for policy and legislation to support businesses and workers alike. We prioritized giving small businesses the tools they needed for compliance, worked with the council to cut burdensome regulations for businesses, and have saved businesses millions of dollars through 33,000 pure eligible violations. We also refunded more than $12 million to restaurants participating in the City Sidewalk Cafe program to alleviate business costs and keep workers employed. That, together with the Department of Transportation's successful Open Restaurants program, has saved more than 100,000 restaurant jobs. We also took steps during the pandemic in partnership with the council to enact needed protections to support fast food, hotel, and food delivery workers. Fast food workers now cannot be arbitrarily fired from their jobs and have a right to reclaim their former jobs. Hotel workers must be retained for 90 days when a hotel is transferred or sold, and longtime employees are entitled to up to 30-week severance pay if they are laid off during the pandemic. And third-party food delivery workers have key new protections, giving them more control over their work and a right to minimum pay. Most recently, DCWP partnered with the city council to pass legislation that provides additional paid leave time to more than 3 million private sector employees to get a child or dependent vaccinated. That legislation will support the small business community by ensuring our city's collective public health. The more we can minimize the effects of the pandemic, the more children will be able to avoid school closures, the more workers will be able to go into work, and the more businesses will benefit from a return to normalcy. Whether in promoting increased business activity or by standing up protections that provide workers with stable jobs and stable paychecks, the administration and city council have been steadfast in supporting businesses and workers. And our message has been clear: we are all in this recovery together. Turning now to today's introduction 2325, right to recall. Introduction 2325 continues the city's efforts to support an economic recovery for all. It provides laid-off workers in airports, event centers, and caterers with a right to recall when their former jobs are once again available. These industries represent tens of thousands of workers in New York City, and it is a critical step to the city's economic recovery that we support their ability to return to work. While businesses like retail stores started more fully reopening and hiring as early as June of 2020, workers in airports and event centers are only now seeing increased opportunities to return to work. Airlines and airports, despite being deemed essential businesses, have endured reduced economic activity due to consumer hesitancy to travel and fluctuations in the public health situation. As a result, many workers who work in airports, including in food and beverage establishments and other customer-facing services, were laid off without knowing when they would return to work. In the case of event centers, these venues were shuttered completely to the public in March of 2020 and only began reopening this past April. That meant the working people supporting concessions and other operations for event venues were still losing opportunities for work almost a year after many other industries were permitted to reopen. Airport and event center workers, many of whom are low-wage workers and people of color, were laid off through no fault of their own. As these sectors reopen more fully, we need to ensure that they have an opportunity to go back to those jobs that were interrupted by the pandemic. These individuals are qualified, trained, and experienced workers eager to join the city's economic recovery. Ensuring these workers' right to recall is a key tool to promote a strong recovery for their communities and for the city. DCWP's partnership with the city council is critical to delivering protections for workers. Introduction 2325 promotes economic stability that is needed to combat the ongoing and lingering impacts of the pandemic. We urge this legislation's immediate passage. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I look forward to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Deputy Director Starr, you may begin when ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Miller, and members of the Civil Service and Labor Committee. My name is Stephen Starr, and I am the Deputy Director and General Counsel of the New York City Office of Collective Bargaining, which I'll refer to as OCB. OCB is the impartial non-mayoral administrative agency charged with administering and enforcing the provisions of the New York City Collective Bargaining Law, the NYCCBL. The board is a neutral tripartite body made up of two city representatives appointed by the mayor, two labor representatives appointed by the municipal labor unions, and three impartial members who were elected by a unanimous vote of the city and labor members. The NYCCBL itself was drafted by a tripartite commission and enacted simultaneously with the Taylor Law in 1967. The amendments you are considering today in proposed bill 2454 were developed in that same tradition as a collaboration between our office, the mayor's Office of Labor Relations, and the Municipal Labor Committee. I am here to speak in support of the proposed bill and to inform the council of the agency's view of the importance of the proposed changes in the council that the council is considering. The primary statutory functions of OCB are to certify employee organizations, adjudicate improper practice petitions, and administer the grievance arbitration procedures that are found in the collective bargaining agreements that exist between the city and most of the municipal unions. The NYCCBL contains a statement of policy which declares it to be the policy of the city to favor and encourage the right of municipal employees to organize and be represented, to enter into written collective bargaining agreements, to utilize impartial independent tribunals to assist in resolving impasses and contract negotiations, and to utilize final impartial arbitration of grievances between municipal agencies and certified employee organizations. It has long been recognized that the rights of collective bargaining is essential to sound and stable labor relations, which benefits the city, its employees, and the public. An essential part of the NYCCBL provided for the payment of dues or fees to employee organizations. These funds are used for the bargaining, enforcement, and administration of collective bargaining agreements and other member benefits. Unions have a duty to a fair representation with respect to its members and non-members covered by their agreements. Until recently, employees that did not become members of an employee organization would pay agency fees instead of dues to cover the cost of that representation. In 2018, the Supreme Court prohibited agency fees for public employees in the significant case Janus versus Askme. As a result, public employee unions retained the statutory duty of fair representation for non-members but could no longer collect agency fees to offset the costs. In 2018, in anticipation of the Janus decision, New York State amended the Taylor Law to account for the elimination of agency fees and to balance that against the union's duty of fair representation. These amendments, among other things, limit a union's obligation to represent non-members to the negotiation and enforcement of the terms of a collective bargaining agreement, allows a union to decline to represent non-members when being questioned by an employer in statutory or administrative proceedings or in grievance or arbitration matters concerning evaluation or discipline, provided the non-member is permitted to proceed on their own, and allows a union to provide legal, economic, or job-related services or benefits beyond those provided in the collective bargaining agreement to only its members. The NYCCB is a local law, and in accordance with the Taylor Law, it must be substantially equivalent to the Taylor Law. For this reason, the proposed amendments to 12-306B1 and B3 reflect the amendments to the Taylor Law that limit a union's obligations to represent non-members and provides that if a union does so in accordance with the law, it does not violate its duty of fair representation nor interferes with, restrains, or coerces public employees in exercising their rights under the NYCCBL. Unlike the Taylor Law, the NYCCBL has a number of provisions regarding grievance and arbitration procedures. The proposed amendments are necessary to provide unions with the authority to allow non-members to proceed to arbitration on their own, at their own expense. It also ensures that where an employee does pursue a grievance or arbitration on their own, the union may participate in those proceedings to protect its interests and those of its members. I will be pleased to answer any questions that the members of the committee may have about the proposed changes to the NYCCBL and look forward to working with the council to pass this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will now turn it over to questions from Chair Miller, followed by council member questions. Panelists, please stay unmuted if possible during this question and answer period. Thank you, Chair Miller. Please begin.
Thank you again, Counselor. So on 2325, as workforce begins to return to work, and we've seen some of some folks that have had difficulty in the desire to return to work. Have we found right to work and similar legislation locally and nationally a viable tool in securing job security and return to work?
Thank you for that question, Chair Miller. You know, with respect to what's happening nationally on right to recall legislation, we are aware that there are models from other states where similar laws have been passed. To this point, we have not had direct conversations with those jurisdictions about their experience, though I will say that we are not aware of any adverse or unintended impacts coming out of that legislation. So we do think that right to recall can be an effective tool, and obviously, this is a mayoral priority and something that we think can, you know, serve as an important step for workers in these targeted industries that are covered by introduction 2325.
Okay, in your testimony earlier, you spoke specifically about the tools, resources, and the support that the city and administration had given to small businesses and other employees throughout the city. That support, has it willfully translated into support for workers? Or do we find right to recall necessary legislation in order for workers to be returning to work in a just manner?
So, we have throughout the pandemic continued, obviously, to enforce existing workplace laws in New York City. The administration also has had the opportunity to work together with council to pass several new laws to protect both essential workers and other vulnerable workers who have been hit very hard by the pandemic. Just to list some examples of that, we have passed protections for displaced hotel service workers to ensure a transitional employment period of 90 days when a hotel is sold or transferred to a new owner. We have together worked on and passed just cause protections for fast food workers. Again, essential workers in New York City to ensure that they are protected from arbitrary firings. We have also worked together on a hotel worker severance law for certain hotel workers to ensure that tenured hotel workers can have a stable income in the form of severance up to and until they do have a chance to recall back to their former jobs.
So are you saying that these are industries that may or may not have been defined in terms of a just return to work for their employees that that they tend to lean towards a younger, less expensive workforce as opposed to the more traditional and experienced, or those who just quite frankly have taken the fruits of the city's resources and use it as a benefit and not necessarily put into workforce as intended?
What I would say in response to that, Chair Miller, is that these are examples of steps that we have taken together to protect workers during the pandemic. We think a right to recall bill here is important because our city's recovery has to work for everyone. The way that this has been put together is to try and balance the needs of workers, get back to work with employers who are staffing back up. We don't think that those have to be at odds. We think there are benefits to businesses to bringing back trained, experienced workers who have done those jobs before. And really, as a matter of fairness and a matter of equity, we believe that workers who lost their jobs through no fault of their own, either young workers, older workers, longer tenured workers, unionized or not, if they were displaced because of the pandemic, we believe they should have an opportunity to go back to their jobs when those jobs are back up and running again.
And for those opponents of of 2325 state that this creates operational burdens and hardships for them, how do we respond?
We are, as I said, when, you know, in working on this legislation, we have tried to balance the operational realities of employers with creating meaningful protections for workers. The industries that are covered by introduction 2325 will tend to have a higher concentration of larger employers, who we do think will have the resources and existing infrastructure to be able to effectively implement and operationalize these protections. Notably, I would also say that this bill will not impose any new monetary costs on covered employers. There is not a new benefit that needs to be funded and paid for here. This is really about creating a process for workers to get back onto their jobs. And again, we think in the long run that will lead to great benefits for these employers. They will be getting trained, qualified workers back into jobs that they've done before without having to go out and find and train new workers. So we think in the long run, this is good policy for our city, and this is going to create a just recovery that will have benefits for all sides.
Okay. Does any of the members have any questions? I don't see any hands raised. Does anyone have a question for the panel on 2325 or 2454 as well?
Chair, I'm gonna do the, like, just give the little overview, because council members, if you have questions for the panelists, please use the Zoom raise hand function. If you would like to ask a question and you have not yet used the Zoom raise hand function, please do so now. But council members, please keep your questions to five minutes. The sergeant-at-arms will keep a timer and will let you know when your time is up. You should begin once I have called on you and the sergeant has announced that you may begin. Let's just give a few seconds to see if any of the committee members have questions.
Good morning, Councilmember Orange. We have been joined by Councilmember Orange, my good friend. How are you, sir? Do you have a question?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. No questions here, but it's always good to see you.
Always good to be in the room with my friend from the south end of Pearl. Are there any other questions on, in particular, on 2325, right to recall?
Chair, I don't see any hands raised. Do you have any follow-up questions, additional questions for the panelists?
No, honestly, we could talk about this all morning, but I think that we really, this is not about to debate to the merit of this legislation. Clearly, we've demonstrated time and time again, pre-pandemic, over the years, the value of of experienced workforce and what happens when those workers aren't protected, when there's a fortunate pandemic situation like this, or when businesses change hands. We've done it, and you know, obviously, in the service industry, building the service industry, and votes restore worker retention. This legislation has worked. It is fair. It is just. And so we think certainly that is applicable in this instance here, and we look forward to the passage of this legislation. So, I do, yep.
I was gonna turn it over to public testimony, but you can finish your remarks, Chair Miller.
Absolutely, yes, you are.
Awesome, thank you. We have concluded administration testimony, and we will now turn to public testimony. I'd like to remind everyone that we will be calling on individuals one by one to testify. Each panelist will be given two minutes to speak. After I call your name, a member, this is for the panelists, after I call your name, a member of our staff will unmute you. There may be a few seconds of delay before you are unmuted, and again, we thank you in advance for your patience. Please wait a brief moment for the sergeant-at-arms to announce that you may begin before testifying.
I'm sorry. Counselor, before we for public testimony, is there others, unions or others that will be testifying, signed up to testify?
Yes, we actually have Robin Roche, who is general counsel, that she'll be testifying on behalf of DC37. We also have Jonathan Tubas from the Workers Circle, and those are two public panelists. We have others that have registered, but they are not on yet, so we're gonna go to those two first, and then if there are additional registrants that we have not called on, we're gonna do that and give them an opportunity. Does that sound fair?
Excellent.
Okay, great. So back to our regular scheduled programming. So the panelists, I went through that. Councilmembers, if you have questions for a particular panelist, please use the Zoom raise hand function. I will call on you after the panel has completed their testimony in the order in which you raise your hand. So for our first public panel, I would like to now welcome Robin Roche to testify after Robin Roche will be hearing from Jonathan Tubas. Robin Roche, you may begin to testify when the sergeant-at-arms starts the time. Thanks.
Mine starts now. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the New York City Council Civil Service Committee and Civil Service and Labor Committee. I am Robin Roche, General Counsel of DC- I am Robin Roche, General Counsel of DC thirty-seven. I'm here on behalf of our Executive Director, Henry Goodwito. Uh, we thank you for this opportunity to uh stand in support of Intro twenty-four fifty-four, um, which, um, as you've heard from Stephen Starr, um, who is the um General Counsel of the OCB, is in particular addresses concerns with respect to what happened after the new the S- US Supreme Court um ruled in the Janus matter. And if I may go to our um testimony. Um, District Council Thirty-seven is the duly certified collective bargaining representative of some one hundred and twenty-five thousand public sector employees in the various agencies, authorities, boards, and corporations in the city of New York. In addition to these um public sector employees, we represent another twenty-five thousand employees in the non nonprofit sector. We are here today in support of Intro twenty-four fifty-four, uh, which um has been introduced here. The amendments set forth in Intro twenty-four fifty-four would, of course, bring the New York City collective bargaining law in compliance with the statutory amendments that the New York State Legislature enacted to the Taylor Law in twenty-eighteen. Of course, the Taylor Law mandates that provisions of the municipal and local collective bargaining laws be in compliance with the Taylor Law itself. Intro.
You may finish.
Okay, I thank you very much. Intro twenty-four fifty-four addresses several major items in light of the United States Supreme Court's ruling in Janus versus Asmi, um, which invalidated, of course, um statutes and collective bargaining agreements allowing unions to collect agency fees or fair share from non-members without their written consent. Um, for example, um, in this instance, um, except for political and ideological activities, the unions were able to collect these matters that benefit all those in the collective bargaining unit. Um, Intro twenty-four fifty-four limits the circumstances under which a union could be held responsible for the breach of duty of fair representation by declining to provide representation to non-members. It would make, it makes clear that a union would not be in ju- breach of the duty of fair representation by not representing a non-member when the employee is being questioned by the employer, nor is the union in breach of duty of the fair representation by decline to represent a non-member in statutory, regulatory, or administrative proceedings such as due process disciplinary matters pursuant to civil service law, due process appeals of involuntary leaves, actions taken under the Fair Labor Standards Act, family medical leave act, federal, state, or local anti-discrimination laws, including the very NYC CBL. We also note that the amendment would not impute the duty of fair representation where the union permits non-members to proceed at their own expense in the grievance arbitration process regarding matters of discipline and performance evaluations only. Here, the non-member would also be responsible for paying the union's share of the cost of such proceedings. Finally, we do not overlook the fact that the amendment allows the unions to provide extra contractual benefits to members only. And we thank you very much for um allowing us to um appear before you and give testimony. We look forward to working with you in the passage of this act.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you so much, Robin. We are now gonna turn to Jonathan Tuviz. You may begin. Um, just wanna say that we're gonna actually give um this public panel, since we have a limited number of registr- registrants, we're gonna allow you a whole to speak for five minutes. So Jonathan, you may begin when the timer starts.
Okay, thank you very much, and hopefully I won't even need that long. I'll I'll try to be brief. Okay, thank you so much, and greetings, council members. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share a few words. My name is Jonathan Taubis. I live in central Brooklyn, and I am the social justice organizer at the Worker Circle. The Worker Circle is a one-hundred-twenty-one-year-old Jewish social justice organization. It was formed by Eastern European Jewish immigrants who fled persecution, fled pogroms, and brought with them a stalwart commitment to participatory democracy, the fundamental equality of every person, and bold activism to advance and protect workers' rights in particular. I'm here today as part of a broader coalition supporting the CIW, the Coalition of Amokali Workers, an award-winning human rights organization that works to protect farmworkers from abusive conditions in agricultural fields across the East Coast. I'm here to ask that this committee and Chair Miller set a hearing and a vote on Resolution eleven fifty-six, a resolution calling on Wendy's to join the fair food program and support farmworkers' human rights that currently now has twenty-eight co-sponsors and is sitting in this committee. When I was planning to attend this meeting, I was very happy to see the committee would be discussing amendments to the city code in relation to protections for restaurant, food service, airport workers who have all been displaced due to COVID nineteen. I want to bring your attention to another group of essential workers that have been drastically impacted by COVID nineteen, namely, the essential farmworkers who have also toiled throughout this pandemic to keep food on all of our tables, including about a hundred thousand agricultural workers in the state of New York alone. And this is something that's becoming even more urgent with the emergence of the Omicron variant. Resolution eleven fifty-six has already gained monumental support from a broad cross-section of New Yorkers, including, but not limited to, students, religious, political, and financial community leaders. In December twenty-nineteen, the Women's Caucus wrote a very powerful letter to Wendy's in support of this resolution. Most recently, former Manhattan Borough President Ruth Messenger penned an op-ed in the Gotham Gazette calling on the city council to quote, "Act swiftly to send a message to Wendy's about how much New York values human dignity and worth." And when investors representing over one trillion dollars in assets managed sent a letter to Wendy's in April of twenty-twenty-one this year, urging the company to join the fair food program to address, quote, "The dire consequences of COVID nineteen and of systemic racism" and to combat widespread abuses in its supply chain, the Office of the New York City Comptroller was among those who signed on. So just to wrap up, the time is more urgent than ever. In the coming days, supporters of this resolution will urge its passage through online testimony. Again, the resolution currently has twenty-eight co-sponsors, including the majority of this committee. Councilmember Adams, Councilmember Dinowitz, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Rosenthal, and Chair Miller are all co-sponsors. My fellow New Yorkers and I are doing our part. We've been making calls, sending emails, showing our support for this resolution and for farmworker rights. Now we ask that the Civil Service and Labor Committee do its part and bring this resolution to a hearing so that we can ensure protections and dignity for all essential workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I will now turn it over to Chair Miller for questions.
Thank you so much, Jonathan, and and I assure you that this committee has for the past eight years stood with farmworkers, really, uh, leading the charge on on resolution that that quite frankly, um, took a number of years to get passed to be re- for farmworkers to be recognized, and and we understand that that was merely the foundation, uh, uh, and making sure that farmworkers attain the dignity and respect that they deserve uh within the workforce. So we'll continue to work with you on that issue. Um, so, uh, Counselor, on uh twenty-four fifty-four, I have a couple of questions and as well as uh for Stephen Starr. I I I'm glad that uh Office of Collective Bargaining is is stands with uh DC thirty-seven and its other bargaining units uh uh in support of twenty-four fifty-four. I I take that one thing that we have espoused to do here at this Committee on Civil Service and Labor, you know, our our mantra has been that we support the the right uh to organize and we support the right to collective bargaining. Um, what happens after that is is up to the experts and the pros uh that sit on on the other side there. And and I I thank you uh for doing the job. Uh, so to so the first question is is about, and and I'm totally, uh, Counselor, and and I know you you guys draw up these questions and and I just go off script, right? So, um, I'm 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 gonna deal with with some of my experience and and, you know, as my time as a president and business agent, I I did not have to deal with the Janus decision that we dealt with in this seat here. But certainly, we had folks that were uh 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 paying agency shop fees and 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 very specific about the benefits that were received or were not received um, uh, by virtue of the agency shop fee. Um, now that the agency shop fee has disappeared, uh, and 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 I know, Counselor, that you that you you had spoke of in your testimony, some specific benefits that were uh being received. Um, could could you, could you uh explain to the committee, um, specifically, uh, what that means and what benefits would they, would a a non-union member, a non-agency shop fee payer, uh, be entitled to under the current Janus decision that we are seeking to amend? And and I'm sorry, and also bring in consistency with the state uh uh law, um, uh, uh, and the amendments to the Taylor Law.
So, under the uh, under the amendments, uh, a union would still be obligated to uh bargain and enforce contracts on behalf of members and non-members alike. But a union would also be permitted to limit its representation of non-members in disciplinary matters, in statutory hearings, um, and things that do not arise under the contract, like, for example, a section seventy-five civil service uh disciplinary hearing. A union could decline to represent a non-member uh in such a hearing, and the non-member would not have uh the right to charge the union with violating its duty of fair representation. Uh, a union could also provide uh non-contractual benefits uh to its members only. For example, unions will sometimes have um legal services programs uh for its members that it funds out of its dues, and so it can decline to provide those same services uh, uh, to non-members, because those are not contractual services, those are services provided by the union itself.
And 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 what about that, wha- what about benefits, uh, that that may come about through some form of negotiation based on, say, for instance, uh, uh, what has uh taken place over the, uh, maybe that's not a good example, over the past two years and and uh obviously, the pandemic and and and, uh, um, work rules and and other provisions that may have been negotiated outside of the the standard collective bargaining agreement.
Do you mean things like overtime?
Well, I I I mean, overtime, but, you know, there there may be other compensations uh involved as well um, that has to do with some some, um.
Contractual wages and benefits, what, like, i- i- if you're talking about contractual wages and benefits, then those would apply to both members and non-members. And a union, um, you know, would bring grievances to enforce that to the entire bargaining union.
Right, now, there it it it, there are there are agreements, outside-standing agreements, would would they apply there as well? Like, you know.
Like memorandum of understanding and.
Yeah, yeah. Special circumstances that that we've seen of late. Um, anything, a- any uh benefits that has that has derived from those special sta- uh, um, circumstances that that we've seen over the past few years, uh, would that be applicable as well?
Yes, uh, those are collective bargaining agreements like any other. They're just not complete.
Yeah, uh-huh. Okay, um, so are are you, are you convinced that that twenty-four fifty-four would would bring, uh, the city's workforce into compliance with with the Taylor Law amendments, uh, of twenty-eighteen?
Yes, I am.
Uh, is there anything that you would add, uh, that is not uh, a part of this legislation, or is 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 it something that you uh sat down uh, perhaps with the MLC or DC thirty-seven and 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 collectively figured out that that we're we're in a good space? Because I would suspect that if DC thirty-seven or some other union within the MLC is legal legally uh accountable, that would make the employer legally accountable as well to some degree. So was there some type of a uh uh collaboration on on uh looking over this legislation?
Uh, yes, there was. The uh Office of Collective Bargaining has a history of um working in collaboration with the MLC and the Office of Labor Relations in uh developing, um, uh amendments. Uh, we amended our rules in uh, uh, two thousand nine, uh, two thousand eighteen. And uh, and in in that situation, we worked with the, with OLR and uh and the MLC, and we did the same here. Um, as an agency, we met um together with the executive staff, and then, um, and then we met, uh, collabor- and collaborated with both the MLC and OLR in uh coming up with the amendments that uh you have before you today. And um, I think I speak with for all, uh, three of us i- in saying that we think that the amendments that we've come up with address, um, the issues that, uh, that we need to in, with respect to the Janus decision and the Taylor Law amendments.
Thank you so much. And 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 Counselor Roach, um, could you speak specifically to the number of members uh, that were lost, um, throughout the district council? Um, because of the Janus decision, do you have a specific number?
Well, 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 Mr. Chairman, I can, um, with regard to that, in June two thousand eighteen, when the Supreme Court decision came down, we had in our record um, some seven thousand or so agency fee shop payers. So, that was an an immediate uh hit to um the union on that day, that that fateful day. So that that's the number, but we had worked very much to reduce that number. Um, of course, with new employees coming in, uh, we do not get if we don't get the opportunity to address those employees, they are not able to be resigned. So, you know, it fluctuates, but I can tell you, on that very day, it was around seven thousand.
So I I would suspect that during, obviously, uh, COVID, uh, the normal uh introduction, uh, the the normal uh new member orientation process does not occur. Uh, I, so how, how, how does the union then um coordinate um, with the new member and 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 really have an opportunity to espouse the virtues of belonging to the district council and belong to a union?
So, in two thousand eighteen, um, the legislature also included a provision that required employers to immediately um notify the union of new employees that are coming on board. And yes, the onboarding process during COVID nineteen has been difficult. However, we've had uh successes at the larger agencies where they're able to coordinate uh matters or coordinate the onboarding of employees and have given the union the opportunity to orient uh employees as to the benefits of joining the union. Um, it is at the smaller agencies where there have been difficulties, and there are quite a number of them. And of course, um, we're not one hundred percent uh successful at the larger agencies where, um, employee orientation is more structured. But we've had that opportunity, and I also want to mention that we were able to, um, in collective bargaining, address in collective bargaining, address that as well, so we have kind of the belt and suspenders model here. Uh, the, the, the law, uh, in the civil service law, as well as in our own collective bargaining agreement, where the employer um has agreed to provide us with information in, in certain, in a more timely fashion than it did prior.
Uh, tha- tha- that's good, uh, I'm, I'm glad that the, the admin at the city sees the value and organized workforce. Um, ha- have, have, have those members that have not uh joined the union and, and those who perhaps uh were a part of the union that are no longer uh dues-paying members of the union, ha- has that had an impact on, on the diminishment of, of, of benefits, or, and let's say when you uh, um, uh, in negotiations at, at whatever level, whether it's the city, whether it's a benefit provider or, or whatever, um, do you take into account uh services delivered for, for each member? Obviously, in this case, um, uh, they are, they are included in, in doing so, but is there a way where uh during collective bargaining, um, and, and, and the regular benefit package, but is there a way to uh, uh quantify um the exact cost um that is being lost, and/or is, does that somehow diminish the value of benefits being received or delivered on behalf of the union because of the loss of, of, of revenue generated uh through dues collection?
Oh, well, of course, there's been a financial um hit. Um, however, in terms of diminution of benefits provided, and our ability are are forced at the bargaining table, that has not diminished, because we are still representing a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that, that, you know, we're still speaking on behalf of a hundred and twenty-five thousand workers, and we view them as workers, and, and people that, if we are able to gar- garner good benefits, we can demonstrate to them the benefit of being in the union, what is the value that the union adds to, to um any given employee. Uh, we have done a number of things, though, uh, Mr. Chairman, we've not stayed flat-footed. We do have, you know, Union Thursdays, for example, where we go out to a particular employer, it could be on one of the H and H facilities, and we announce that we're coming this Thursday, da-da-da, and, you know, come talk to us, uh, we have members who brought their friends, and I, 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 I remember uh before we left one twenty-five Barkley Street for its um refurbishment, I, we had brought in some people who were in the administrative titles, and I saw a member walking in, like five of his colleagues, to say, here, join the union here, what we have to say here, what we do. So we do a lot of that, we do a lot of member surveys, we encourage member, do member-to-member sign-ups, so that we've been very proactive with that, and it's been very beneficial, especially when we put the pedal to the metal, of course, it's been um affected um by COVID nineteen and our ability to move around, but nevertheless, we are making strides.
Ha- ha- have you, have you, I, I, from, from, from a council uh committee standpoint, we've seen uh the growth in, at least in the interest of unions and, or, and, and organizing over the past two years, considering uh the pandemic and, 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 and some of the treatment to, to the workforce that, that folks found it imperative that they uh organize and, and become a union member to, to guarantee uh some of the benefits that, that they weren't enjoying, um, was there a benefit, uh, uh, was there an increase uh in at least interest uh over the past two years by virtue of COVID nineteen?
Um, I couldn't necessarily say that there's been an interest, I, I would say that where we have had the opportunity to speak to people, because they don't know, and even with a lot of the people who came off of the payroll as agency fee shop, they were unaware what that meant. That it, for a lot of people, it was, it says union, they don't know A means agency fee, or zero means you're a member, they didn't know the difference. But when spoken to uh by our, 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 um, addressed by the union, that, you know, people, their interest was, you know, keen, uh, we did have, we do have people who are interested in being a part of this this organization called the union.
Okay, and, 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 and obviously specifically, thi- thi- this address issues like uh, uh arbitration, uh, um, representation and, and otherwise, obviously, that's the, the significant cost uh in legal services. Um, could you speak to how, how this impacts that? Uh, um, in terms of having to represent or not represent, non-represent, non-represented members uh during these procedures?
Well, as counsel start, I explained, um, for negotiated benefits, um, the union owes a duty of fair representation to members, non-members alike. Uh, this particular legislation um would give them, non-members, um, a benefit, or I'm looking at it, give them a little leg up in the sense that if the unions, not necessarily District Council Thirty-seven, uh, because we do have a very robust way of how we um determine whether a case is meritorious and should go to arbitration. And it isn't because of money, it is really the way we view it, we negotiated this contract, and we look at it that every bad decision takes away from the meaning of the language in the contract, and every good decision heightens or strengthens the language in the contract. So that's where we believe in the exclusivity of the union and our ability to determine whether something so what is, a, a matter should proceed to arbitration. But as he explained, there, it's really only two finite areas, areas of, uh, in collective bargaining that is carved out, that would give a lot of leeway to um a non-member. And that is in, in the disciplinary grievance process, uh, which by the way, right now, any member of the bargaining unit could go from step one through three, which are the intermediate steps before you get to arbitration, the ultimate step, without the union, however, we have a right to be present during those proceedings, and to um give our take on what the contract is and protect our interests. These two positions that I'm talking about are in disciplinary matters, where an individual would have more at stake, let's face it, and evaluation process, where the individual again has a lot more at stake than, say, the union would in, in such matters. And so I, I believe that this legislation looks at it in a fair manner, fair to the union and fair to the employer.
Okay, thank you, and, and, and that would be tha- tha- for, for, for my colleagues and, you know, and, and, and some of the lay folks in the audience that, that per- per- perhaps uh w- were saying that where it would have unintended and uh, uh, consequences on the, on the larger bargaining unit, uh, that, that the union deems it necessary for them to participate in the proceedings, uh, because the decision could have dire consequences one way or the other, want to make sure that it uh, that their resources are behind it to make sure that it has a positive uh influence with, with, with that big situation, uh, kind of not necessarily at al, but it, 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 it's something that is not just it, 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 it may be about the individual, but the consequences are far greater, the decision could be far greater than the individual, would the, the union then uh find its way involved in uh that process as well?
Uh, yeah, that, that is true, Mr. Chairman, we would, we would, um, of course, um, again, protecting the contract, um, be involved in any kind of process, but more, more than likely, uh, this particular union does review a, a matter to determine whether it should uh proceed to arbitration or not, and we're we don't believe that this, this provision requires us to give up our exclusivity.
Uh, tha- that's important, thank you, um, colleagues, I, I don't see any hands raised, uh. Bianca, could you?
Yeah, I got it, I got this spiel, thank you so much, everyone, for your testimony in the first public panel, we're going to turn it over to council member questions. Um, I will now ask if there are any more questions from council members, as a reminder, if council members have questions for a particular panelist, please use the raise hand function in Zoom at this time. Okay, let me see, me. I don't see any. Okay, seeing as there are no questions, we're now going to turn to our second public panel, oh, Stephen, sorry, you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Uh, not, not a question, I just wanted to um make a point about um a non-member's right to proceed to arbitration or, or through a grievance. Um, in our view, we don't think that this legislation gives them any greater rights than anyone else. Um, in order for a non-member to proceed to arbitration, uh, that, the individual would need the permission of the union. And if the union did not give them that permission, then they could not proceed to arbitration on their own. The outcome in that sense is if the union declined to proceed to arbitration, that person could bring a duty of fair representation case against the union like any member. But, um, but the person could not go to arbitration unless the union permitted them to do it. And so, um, so in our view, this doesn't give them any greater rights than any of the existing members.
And, 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 and for you or Counselor Roach, if, if, if that non-member proceeded to arbitration, who would incur the cost?
Well, um, we I think if a member, or, I'm sorry, a non-member wanted to proceed to arbitration and bear his or her own costs, for example, we have cases where a member would, where we assign, the union assigns counsel to a matter, just about any case that goes to arbitration for us, counsel is assigned to represent the union, because the party is the union. If we were to uh designate or to assign uh our interest in a matter to a non-member, that non-member, this legislation allows the union to sh- um, have the non-member bear the cost of such, of such an arbitration.
That's correct, if the union elects to proceed, then the union can pay for it, if the union uh gives the member the ability to proceed on their own, then the member would pay for it.
Okay, thank you. I'm, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see that uh, that labor and management are are working cohesively on this important issue, because clearly, there's a lot to uh agree to disagree about, but this is certainly not one of them, that, you know, a strong organized workforce is, is to the benefit of the city, we, we normally prefaced every um hearing that we do here in, in civil service and labor by saying that it is, it is not the members of the city council, the mayor, speaker, any of the elected officials that, that uh causes the sixty-five million uh tourists to come to New York City, but it is the New York City's valuable workforce that keep us healthy, safe, clean, and all of those things that the, the New York City workforce does, uh, uh, that gives value to the city, so I want to thank you both uh for your testimony, um, and, and ask that you hang around, because we do have uh another panel and some other questions coming up. Are there any other questions, uh, Bianca, there's, uh, otherwise I see, uh, the great Susie Lozada and, and others.
Yeah, United One Hundred members are here strong on the second panel, and I don't see any more council member questions, um. So we're going to just move on to the second public panel, if that's okay with you, Chair.
Absolutely.
Okay, I would like to now welcome Susie Lozada to testify, after Susie, I will be calling on Maria Verminde, and then John, John, I'm going to apologize in advance, if you want to just give us the pronunciation of your name, I really I'm going to botch this, so John, can you just uh pronounce your name for me?
Papa.
Awesome.
That's why.
Beautiful, uh, okay, Susie, you may begin.
So much, um, good morning, Committee of Service, uh, Civil Service and Labor Chair Danny Miller and all the city council members. Um, my name is Susie Lozada, and I'm the Secretary Treasurer for United Here Local One Hundred New York Food Service Workers Union. I'm excited to be here today with the backing of food service workers across New York City to testify in support of INTU twenty-three twenty-five. More than anything, COVID nineteen have brought home for each of us the sanctity of life in our collective. Responsibility for one another. Working need this bill, because the pandemic had kept them out of work for longer than most of us had predicted predicting this. Many have already faces or will soon face declines on the rise to the recall to their jobs. With the rise of the recent Omicron, Ebola, influenza, and Friday variants of COVID nineteen, it seems that the recovery will continue uh a, a slow and use uncertain pace, so we are not sure what will be happening. As a city, we need to reevaluate what is fair and just recovery look like. We must join over a dozen cities across the country that have already passed hospitality worker recall legislation. Since the start of the pandemic, such bills have passes in Los Angeles, Chicago, Washington D.C., Baltimore, Philadelphia, and New Haven, among others. We call for the passages of INTU twenty-three twenty-five and an expansion of recall rights to include all food service workers in New York City. The reason is simple. Food service workers must be able to return to their job when those job return. This is basic and essential protection for thousands of workers, most of whom are black and brown New Yorkers, and the majority of whom are women. United Here Local One Hundred members believe the rest of justice is at the heart of this issue. At a national level, workers' calls face higher rates of unemployment than white workers. Black workers are twice as likely to be unemployed as white workers. And Latino workers are about one and a half times as likely New York is. They stay with the higher rates of unemployment for AAPI populations at seven point nine percent, and Latino populations at a ten point seven percent. Working in hospitality industry have by far faces the most job loss as any sector. Women and people of color in hospitality job tend to face occupational segregation that keeps them in serving positions rather than management or financier jobs in the industry. This in-person food service position represent two-thirds of pre-pandemic hospitality jobs, but nearly three-quarters of the jobs lost during the pandemic. Lost wages, lost hour workers, larger women and people of color has been and continuing to be hit by horrors in this difficult time. In-person and food service. has been slow to return, and many people continue to work from home.
Time expired.
Most of the workers cannot work from home. We made sure we do not allow the pandemic to move us backwards and degrade so much of our hard-won progress. Please support INTRO 2325. It will help us to move forward as we continue to recover from the pandemic and continue to struggle for the justice we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susie. Thank you so much. I'm going to now turn it over to Maria. Maria, you may begin when the clock starts.
Starting time.
Hello, my name is Maria Veramendi. I work at the 21 Club on Fifth Avenue in New York City. I've been with the 21 Club for 11 years. I'm also the first woman who was hired as a banquet captain at the 21 Club. That pandemic affected me 1,000%. I used to be able to budget my funds properly. This has not only affected me, but my younger daughter also. I used to be able to pay for her after-school programs. My daughter is 12, and I want to do my best to keep her out of the trouble and have her in programs after school. Currently, me and my daughter lost our benefits due to the 21 being closed and doing the best that I can as a mother and not receiving food stamps or unemployment. Sorry, I'm working as much as I can and it still is not enough. My bills are more than $700. I can't afford to leave where I'm staying anymore, but I also can't afford to move because I will need three months worth of rent. All the money I saved up is gone due to the pandemic. I work three jobs right now. I work for the UBS Arena in Long Island. I work for the In-Job Agency. Then often send me to New Jersey. I mostly work at the RHC in New York. I travel between two or three hours to get to work. Working three jobs is simply still enough. None of these jobs offer benefits. There was benefits, that's why they only gave me two days. One year should be enough. And when the 21 opens, I deserve to go back to work like I never left. Please pass this bill so me and my coworkers, who also be there a long time, go back to work. We just want peace of mind that we have our job back when they open. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maria. We're going to now turn to John. John, you may begin when the clock starts.
Starting time.
You can start, John.
Hi, my name is John Papa Alberios. Good morning. I'm in the restaurant business for 53 years and a member of United Here Local 100 from the start. The last 29 years working at 21 was the highlight of my career and the place I want to stay until I finally retire. It was my dream job, my final destination. At 11 men, I developed many friendships through the year with the customers. They still contact me even today after almost two years out of work. It meant everything to me. The restaurant shut down on March 14, 2020. I worked the final Saturday night. I even served the last party in the dining room. I felt destroyed after spending almost 30 years of my career, of my life at 21 Club. And all my coworkers are suffering. Our medical insurance expired in September. The Cobra plan expired through the rescue plan. People are filing for Medicaid and looking for part-time jobs. Personally, I'm a recovering cancer patient, me and my wife. I'm in remission for the last four years. And my insurance ran out in September. I'm without insurance right now. Unfortunately, this bill does not include restaurants in the recall plans. We ask you to please include all the restaurants in the recall rights. It was the hardest hit industry during the pandemic, and it puzzles me why they left them out. We want to be back to work. Please say yes to INTRO 2325. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John. I'm going to now turn it over to Chair Miller for questions for the panelists. Chair Miller.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to those that have testified here this morning. Susie, do you know how many union members and airport hospitality and service workers were out, how many by virtue of the pandemic? How many remain out today that have not gone back to work?
So, as you know, we represent New York and New Jersey. We represent 18,000, approximately 80,000 workers. And right now, we have 6,000-plus members working. In our industry, we have a specialty restaurant and food service in New York City area. 8,000-plus workers used to work in the area. And right now, it's only 6,000. But the thing is that we have restaurants that are open. We have locations that are open, but locations are not open at full capacity. And our members are highly concerned and not to be recalled back to work.
So are you saying that some restaurants have opened in full capacity and they have not brought your members back? They may have, in some cases, brought back new workers that are not organized and/or who prefer to recall less?
No, I'm not saying that. I think the circumstances right now with COVID-19 have not been permitting restaurants and companies to call all the workers. Unfortunately, what we see is that the few workers that they had called has been doing one, a job for one or two people.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, so, so in your estimation, should they have called back more than the amount of persons that they have called back based on the requirements of the job? Not just the fact that historically, as you said, that this may be a job or task performed by multiple persons, more than one person? But from a health and safety standpoint specifically, do you believe that they should have and can have the ability, capacity to call back more folk?
I certainly believe it. I think that all the years experience of our members will be very valuable for the companies. So we have members that have been working for 20, 10, 10, 20, even 30 years. I understand the circumstances, and that's why we're saying as soon the locations are open, they should recall the members. So, and we need security for our members, right? We need the workers who really keep the economy going in New York City to have the opportunity to return to work when the locations are open at full capacity or at the time that they're being opening.
Well, you heard testimony from the administration about all the work that they have done on behalf of small business, in particular, the restaurant and other tourist industries here in New York City to support them in a plethora of different ways. Do you believe that that has been sufficient? That there is more that the admin can do? Or partially is, you know, are folks kind of reaping the benefits of all of the governmental support and services and not necessarily reopening fully and not necessarily supporting workers in the manner that they were supported?
So what I believe is the administration has been doing a good job in terms of helping to move the economy in New York City and that the administration is taking a step in supporting in some way the workers through supporting this INTRO 2325. And I'm sure that all the city council members who are part of the labor committee and the whole city council understand this because we, time to time, go to restaurants, and these are our neighbors. And these workers are the ones that bring up the economy in our neighborhood. So the money that they earn, they spend within our neighborhood, within the district that city council member represent.
Agreed, agreed. Are there any councillor, are there any questions from the committee members?
I do not see any hands raised, but I will remind council members, if you have questions for a particular panelist, please use the Zoom raise hand function. Okay, seeing as there are no questions, we are now concluding our second panel of testimony. Do you have any further questions for the panelist chair before we move on?
Uh, no, but Mr., where was it? Mr. Papa, Papa?
Papa Alberios.
Papa Alberios.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, because I knew I was going to get it right, Papa Alberios, right? So you said that you spent more than 21 years at, 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 21?
29 years.
29 years, wow, that's an entire career that most folks would hope to have.
53 years.
And wow, more than half of your, significantly more than half of your adult life, your life. And so, all of your, your benefits having expired to this point here, including healthcare, unemployment insurance?
Yes.
And?
We haven't received, we haven't received a penny from 21 Club management at all. We haven't received any help at all whatsoever.
Nothing from the employer at all? So all your benefits came from the government?
From the rescue plan.
Yeah, and you obviously, you talked about your health insurance, which is expired.
My recovery, recovered cancer in remission right now, so. Me and my wife also.
Are you using Cobra now? Cobra? Cobra expired as well?
It's expired, yeah.
That was additional six months?
September 30.
And what are your next steps in terms, obviously, you need health insurance?
Yes. I was hoping that we'd call back at work, you know?
Yeah. But because you have these pre-existing conditions and obviously find yourself particularly vulnerable during the pandemics, you know, we have to make sure that you have health insurance. You know, that's important. Obviously, the city has really done its diligence in making sure that we are providing health insurance to those who are most vulnerable, those who need it most. So offline, I'm sure whether it's your member or my office can assist that, can assist you there as well. So please keep that in mind, you know, that we can reach out as well.
That's how important it is for us, you know, for the, for the INTRO 2325 to pass, you know? Because it's affecting, affecting all the members. A lot of the members are filing for Medicaid and looking for part-time jobs. I'm trying to work part-time jobs to, you know, to pay for the bills, you know?
Absolutely.
It's very important to us for the plan to go through, you know? Because restaurants are most affected by, in the industry, by any other industry, you know? During the pandemic, it was the hardest heat industry.
Absolutely.
It's extremely important for us for this law to pass.
The question is, is your restaurant is not open at all, has it?
No, no, they haven't reopened. They never reopened in 1911, you know? The 25%, the 75%, they're never open.
Yeah, do we, do we know from the union perspective if they have any intent to reopen? And what would be the process in terms of the union? Do you have a employment role based on seniority or whatever that you can send them to some other restaurants?
They haven't responded to us at all.
So we, we are not sure when they will be opening. That's why we don't know when the rest of the restaurant will be opening. That's why we're saying that the restaurants and the different company open, they should recall the workers.
Agreed, agreed. So we have to figure out who gets back to work. And in the interim, so is the procedure of those, whatever company you were working with, you go back there? If there's any new companies come online, that come online, is there a procedure for displaced workers within the union to man those new positions?
Well, remember that we passed the worker retention in. That will apply, but in this situation, which is a right to the pandemic, it's a different because by bargaining, yes, we have one year, six months, in some places, three months, and other places by bargaining to write to recall, right? But pandemic, this is over a year. And that's why we need to have some security for the workers that go beyond bargaining, which is trying to bargain with different companies, which some of them we got some extensions.
Susie, do you represent workers in the airport industry? Any workers in the airport industry?
Yeah, too, we represent the concession workers at the airport, and we also represent the airline catering workers. Yes.
Do they return to work?
They have been slowly returning to work. They are now at full capacity. Some of the airline catering have a bigger number back to work. And some airline catering has been rehiding the workers as new because based on bargaining, they have only 30 or 60 days. So that's why it's, again, really important that INTRO 2325 pass.
So industries such as the airport and airline industry that has significantly benefited from government dollars have not necessarily done right by workers. And it is important that this legislation supports workers and getting back to work because industry in some cases aren't doing the right thing. Thank you, Susie. Thank you, John. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Your testimony.
We are now going to make an announcement. Specifically, I'm going to call on Joel Herrera. Joel, I'm not sure if you had registered to give testimony and if you would like to now. You can, I'm going to allow you to talk if you want to let us know if you want to provide testimony. Can you unmute yourself? Okay, I guess Joel does not want to give testimony. All right, if I had inadvertently missed anyone that has registered to testify today and has yet to have been called on, please use the Zoom raise hand function now. And you will be called in order that your hand has been raised. So Joel, if you want to give testimony, please use the raise hand function. If you don't raise your hand, then I'm assuming you don't want to give testimony. All right, assuming there is no more testimony, I'm going to turn it over to Chair Miller for closing remarks. Chair Miller.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Bianca. I want to thank the members of the committee for their indulgence in this important hearing. We have worked really hard to ensure that workers are retained, that they get back to work. As we said before, it is the workforce in New York City, whether it is our municipal workforce or it is our private workforce that give this city value and makes 65 million New York, out of towners want to come to New York and relocate New York and spend their dollars in New York City. Because of the work that you do, the value that you add to the city is incumbent upon. and coming upon us to ensure that we recognize those critical services that are being delivered by the New York City's workforce and that we support this workforce, uh, with, uh, what other resources that we have, that we can, within our, uh, legal and, and, uh, and other responsibilities to ensure that we're protecting workers. I hope that we have done so. I look forward to the passage of twenty-three, um, twenty-five and, and, and certainly, uh, uh, my legislation, twenty-four fifty-four as well. Uh, excited about supporting workers. I wanna thank those who testified, uh, from the administration, from the union, uh, look forward to working with you all, uh, in the very short period that time that we have left in this legislation, legislative session and my tenure here. Uh, also, I, I believe that we have one more upcoming hearing. Uh, I wanna say that, uh, over my, uh, eight years as the chair of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, it has been my honor and ple- pleasure and, and privilege, um, to sit as chair and support workers. Um, had the, the honor and pleasure of working with many of, of you over those past eight years. And I, I know that you all know that, that, uh, our work continues, whether we're sitting here or someone else at the struggle on behalf of workers continuing and that I will be here with you. So with that, uh, once again, thank you to the members of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor who are here this morning. Thank you all for joining us and this hearing is now adjourned.